East Hampton Town Board, we are live.
Morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. Cheryl, if you could please read the roll call.
Present.
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 Present. If we could all please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we start today's meeting with public portion. We ask you to please kindly keep your comments to three minutes, and that's followed. We have four topics today. The first is bids. Then we're going to get a presentation from our junior lifeguard cadets on beach water safety. That'll be followed by recommendations for the ADU Committee on code changes. And lastly, we'll have a discussion on the special event late fees. That'll be followed by liaison reports and resolutions. So first, we'll start with public portion. I don't know, Cheryl, if anyone signed up. Is there anyone here in the meeting room that would like to...David, come on down. July 1st. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Happy summer.
Happy summer.
David Buda from the Springs. I'm beginning to feel like this is an episode of the Groundhog Day. I'm here to repeat what I said on November 12th and April 1st, when prior discussions by the ADU Committee for drastic changes to the town code are being again advocated. The two most critical changes that are again now being expressly requested are not warranted, not needed, not lawful, in my opinion. To exempt within an ordinary, single-family residential zone, to exempt a house that has an ADU from the zoning requirements that place limits on the amount of gross floor area is unwarranted, unwise. I don't have to tell any of you why you recently changed the code to make some reasonable additional limits on the use of our property, so as not to overburden the community, not to overburden the environment, but to take a class of ownership and give them some special exemption from those GFA regulations would be simply unwarranted. And I frankly don't know how your town attorney would find a basis for authorizing such a change. The other thing that you're again trying to bring up is the reduction in the minimum lot area, which is currently 20,000, builder's half acre. Now, most of you know the history of zoning in the town didn't start...there was no zoning until 1957. There are a couple of areas of town that do have a lot of small lots. They tend to be lots that were created before zoning. They tend to be areas near the beaches. They tend to be extremely environmentally sensitive in terms of the beach areas of, say, Beach Haven or Ditch Plains, two areas I'm familiar with. These are areas that especially need not to be overburdened by increased density. So there's ample opportunity. By the way, I'll repeat something I've said prior previously. I am, in my opinion, a strong advocate for affordable housing. The town should do much more to develop affordable housing apartments, to find affordable housing zoning areas that are not currently zoned, to encourage the development of affordable housing. But to do so within the existing single-family zones by exempting certain owners from the laws and rules that everyone else must comply with, or and to consider allowing ADUs on lots smaller than 20,000 is really, in my opinion, very unwise. Stand on time.
Your name?
Let me just say that sure, there are lots that are just under 20,000. There are some areas of the town that were zoned, that were lawfully created with lots that were 15,000 square foot. There aren't a lot of 10,000 square foot lots. And, you know, your analysis that was done where you grouped together all lots between 10,000 and 15,000 really mixes apples and oranges. You really have to consider what the impact on the neighborhood, on the environment would be to allow ADUs to be placed on a 10,000 square foot lot and then exempt that additional up to 1,200 square feet of floor area from your regulations. You are essentially undercutting yourselves. The reforms that you recently implemented will now be undercut by your own proposed actions. So I do hope that you will continue to resist this effort to make these two radical, drastic changes that really are not necessary. ADUs are fine. I prefer to call them affordable accessory apartments, but now we have a new terminology. I do think there's plenty of room and need for additional affordable housing, but there is single-family zoning, and that needs to be respected and maintained. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Jason, is there anyone on the line?
Yes, we have one caller on the line. Let me unmute them right now.
You.
And caller ending for 221. You are on the air.
Thank you, LTV. Good morning, Town Board. This is Jane Mering, and I'm Amagansett. I'm speaking today only as an individual resident and not a member or representing any town-appointed board or committee. I'm here for a couple minutes to add some comments to dialogue related to the upcoming work session later in this meeting regarding ADUs. But before that, first, I want to acknowledge that today is July 1. And aside from saying the lucky quote "rabbit rabbit" as my first words to you, I also want to note that this July 1 is the date that the zoning code changes related to maximum GFA formula become fully effective. And once again, I want to acknowledge all the members of this town board, town staff, and so many members of the public who came together over, I think it was like a three-year period of thought and review to drive that important change. But in the words of Alanis Morissette, the 1990s queen of alt-rock angst, I will say, quote, "Isn't it ironic?" Isn't it ironic that I'm here to comment on a proposed piece of code that looks to contravene the very zoning code that becomes effective today by proposing that certain resident instructors be exempt from all dimensional zoning regulations, including max GFA, max coverage and setbacks? And to do that on lots that are already deeply substandard, undersized, non-conforming to resident zone lot area minimums, and likely in neighborhoods of already with the greatest, most stressed density, this proposal is indeed, quote, "A jagged little pill to swallow." So here are my thoughts. Adding ADUs on lots less than 20,000 is indeed a stretch. All four board members, four of the five board members commented at the last work session that going to 10,000 didn't seem particularly appropriate or justified. So it seems odd to me we're back here with the same idea being moved forward again. My view is that a reduction to perhaps 17,500 square foot lots, the most appropriate, it would add another nearly 9% to the possible pool of lots. Or perhaps I get a compromise down to 15,000 square feet for lot threshold, which expands the applicant pool somewhat greater, about 14%. But it would still have some modicum of respect for the comprehensive plan and the greatest non-conforming density of the resident zones. Second, I firmly believe that ADUs must adhere to dimensional zoning formulas and maximums. I could make a case that detached ADU of up to 600 square foot could be exempt from GFA, but it still should have to meet building coverage, lot coverages, setbacks, et cetera. And with respect to attached ADUs, they really must meet GFA coverage and setbacks as well. Also, I have for years questioned the max of 1,200 square feet for an attached ADU, if that is all above ground living space, and I continue to do so here. So for a max attached ADU, perhaps 600 square feet, or a proration of not 6%, but 4% or 4.5% of lot area makes more sense. That puts the max in more, a bit more moderate, but still spacious. Lastly, I am personally working my thought process through about the allowance for ADUs on property owned by seasonal, second, third, fourth, et cetera homeowners. I won't go into this thought now, but I do believe it creates a very, very big enforcement hurdle, and it's ripe for abuse and for building units that will really not serve the full-time resident backbone of the community. Just my last sentence. To wrap up, in the last work session on this topic, Councilman Calder P. Mon said it well. We want to create opportunity, not create problems. And I think many of us will agree, exemption from dimensional zoning maximums going beyond a lot size and enabling 1,200 square foot ADUs are very likely to create enormous problems, especially when ADUs are no more because of changes in circumstances and sale of property. So I again look forward to the work session later today. Thank you for indulging me a little extra time here.
Thank you, Jane. Is there anyone else on the line, Jason, that would like to address the board?
We have no other callers.
Okay, so we're going to move on then to our topics. First up is Jeannie Carosa with bids. Welcome, Jeannie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All righty. The first bid this morning is, I'm looking at the wrong one, the Tramo Screen for Sanitation. The apparent low bidder is Emerald Equipment Systems in the amount of $344,680. And they, and good news about that, when they came in well under budget. Next is for the Supply and Delivery of Food Items. Mavilla Foods is the apparent low bidder for that. Food Service and Kitchenware Items, Mavilla, Sam Tellen Sun, Interboro Packaging, and Grady's Team are all the apparent low bidders. We have several extensions, the first being the Fort Hill Cemetery Interments and Maintenance Contract, and that's with Peter Joyce Seaside Landscaping. The annual amount for that is $28,966. HVAC Repair Service and Installation for the Communication Towers, Best Climate Control, and also Best Climate Control agreed to extend the cooperative we have with Sag Harbor Schools for the same services. Auto Parts Extension to Advanced Stores, Grade A Petroleum, Fleet Pride, and Morgan Auto Supply. And finally, we have a notice for an IA System Installation for 20 Dorset Road. And that's it.
All right. Anyone have questions for Jeannie?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a presentation from two of our junior lifeguard cadets, Vanessa Rizzo and Lucy Knight. Chief Ryan, did you want to set this up first?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Our junior, our NIPR program, Junior Lifeguard Program, and our cadet program are a powerful way in which we not just help young individuals become better swimmers, but more, more towards becoming water safe. And education is the key to this, this program, those programs. Our cadet program is our graduating group of junior lifeguards. Many of these, these young ladies entered as a NIPR at the age of six, or seven, or eight, and then moved up into the junior lifeguard program at age nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and now are 15-year-olds that have become Still Water Certified, or are looking to become Still Water Certified, and then looking to move forward even more to becoming an ocean lifeguard. So our cadet program is like an, it's like an apprentice program. Our three, our goals is to promote, educate, and encourage. To promote water safety and awareness of the local, our local beaches, to educate young women, men and women, in the role of an ocean lifeguard, to promote physical fitness, team building, CPR, and first aid, and to encourage both young men and young women to continue to complete, complete the course and one day pursue a lifeguard certification and return to the open, as open water lifeguards. We know that education is vital to making sure that people are safe on our beaches. So we, I've brought these two cadets to here today to talk about water safety and water safe, give you some water safety tips.
And the timing couldn't be more perfect with 4th of July upon us.
Absolutely.
All right, ladies.
Good morning. I'm going to be Vanna. Vanna White.
Obviously. Welcome. It's good to have you both here today.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, I'm Lucy Knight, and I have been in this junior lifeguard program since kindergarten. So I've been here since I was six. I'm now turning 15. And I started off as a NIPR guard, and then I became a junior, and now I'm a cadet going to my sophomore year of high school. Through the years, this program has taught me so much about ocean safety, and I'm here now today to tell you about the ocean safety tips.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Rizzo, and I've been a junior lifeguard for five years, and I'm, and I'm a cadet this year. I highly recommend this program to every kid as it's taught me so much about how to be comfortable and safe in the ocean. Today, Lucy and I would like to share some tips on water safety.
With summer now in full swing, East Hampton Town Lifeguard Cadets wish to welcome you in having a safe summer of 2025 by offering you some water safety tips.
Rule number one, learn to swim. You can be any age to learn, and the town offers free lessons at the bay beaches.
Rule number two, know where you are. Beach access signs.
That's it.
So at every beach, there are...
It's got to be, if we want it on the camera.
So at every beach, there are one of these signs. So always know that...
You're gonna...
This camera right here.
That one. Johnny, this.
John, this camera right here, one close to me. Comes down right in front of me, and you can hold it up. There you go.
Yep.
And hold it up high to that camera.
Jason, can you just...
Oh, nice.
Perfection, perfection.
At everyone, at every beach, there is one of these signs. And so whenever you're at the beach, look at that sign so you know exactly where you are.
So what does 16A mean? What is the A?
Amagansett.
Amagansett.
Yeah, so it's, W is for Wayne Scott, A is for Amagansett, and M is for Montauk. And they go from west to east in numerical order of all our beach access points.
Rule number three, in any suspected emergency, call 911 immediately. The easiest part of a swimming rescue is getting to the victim. The hardest part is keeping them afloat. Always use a flotation device for every rescue.
Rule number four, always swim near lifeguard. They are there to help you and keep you safe.
Rule number five, never swim alone, even in your own pool. It's best to swim with a partner to ensure safety.
Rule number six, never underestimate the surf. Conditions can change and become extremely dangerous.
Number seven, know the flag colors. The flag colors are green, yellow, red, and no flag. Green indicates safe conditions. A yellow flag is cautious conditions with larger surf and moderate rip currents. Red flag is dangerous conditions, restricted swimming due to dangerous surf, and strong rip current advisory. No flag means no swimming, and there is extremely dangerous surf.
Do you want to show them the sign? So going back to, going back to rule number six, never under, sorry, underestimate the surf. There are signs, and when you scan them, it can tell you about the conditions of the surf for the day. Rule number eight, a non-swimmer should not rely on flotation devices such as boogie boards, surfboards, tubes, and rafts. You may lose them in the water, and leashes can break. And you can get sucked out in a rip current with a flotation device.
Number nine, if you are in trouble, shout and wave one arm up with a closed fist like this for help. A lifeguard will come immediately.
Rule number 10, if caught in a rip current, stay calm and swim across the current, parallel to shore, until you escape it. Then you can make your way back to shore. If you cannot swim across the current, let it carry you out. Eventually, it will lose force. Then you can swim away from it and back towards shore using a non-tiring stroke. If you get tired, wave with a closed fist and call for help.
The non-tiring strokes are breaststroke and side stroke, and they prevent, like, wasted energy, so you can remain calm and escape safely. Number 11, never dive into unknown waters or shallow breaking waves. Dive with hands down and head up like this to avoid head and neck injuries. Also, look for rip currents and check the flag before entering the ocean.
And most importantly, have a safe and enjoyable summer.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Don't sit down so fast, because board members may have questions. So I'm going to actually go out of order and go first. So I'm sure, because you've been in these programs for so long that you do the lifeguard competitions, what are your favorite or your strongest events that you compete in?
Well, we're doing the TORP rescue at Nationals this year.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
Yeah, we're really excited.
Where's Nationals this year?
It's in California, but I don't know the exact location, but it should be coming out soon.
Yeah. So you're going to do TORP rescue, rescue and compete against teams from all across the country?
Yeah.
Have you been to Nationals before?
Yes. I've been going since I was nine, I think, so.
I've been going for like the past couple Nationals.
Wow. Terrific.
It's been at like Virginia Beach, Texas, and I was in California, which is like the big, exciting one.
Texas is very hot.
Yes, I can imagine. Do board members have questions?
I've got one, which is just outside of what we just discussed. You know, what's one change that you would like to see in people's behavior on the beaches to improve safety on our beaches?
Probably do not be so reckless around like the ocean and like really underestimate the surf, because that's really how people need saving.
Yeah. Thank you.
If you had friends or family or visitors that are out here that had children there from six to eight years old, give me one sentence about what you would tell them about the NIPR program and how important it is for a child of that age to learn about the water.
For me, because I started at six years old, it was extremely helpful because, one, it helped me get super comfortable with, because it's in the bay, usually at Albert's. It made me extremely comfortable in bay waters and really at such a young age. It, like, it taught me so much, even like the basics of TORP rescue when we were so little. And once you finish that program and you are really comfortable going to the junior program with like the real ocean.
Yeah, practicing the bay as like a little kid really like sets you up for like the ocean, so you can feel more comfortable when you're older, and you can even help other people and like educate others on how they can stay safe in like a dangerous situation.
I just want to follow up on that. I just want to thank you, but I also thank your parents also, because a lot of parents put extra time in to get their children to these very specific and important type of activities that, you know, the town's lifeguard program and recreation hold into. So I thank your parents also for, for their commitment to that also.
And I want to thank you for being trusted messengers in your age group to people, because I think it's very important for peer-to-peer communication on these issues and how to be safe. I think folks are much more opening, open to hearing it from people their own age than someone standing over them. So I hope you realize how important your participation is, and I thank you for your service to our community.
I don't have any questions. I would just like to say thank you for being part of the program and for this wonderful presentation. It's, I love what you do. Water safety is very important here, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks, Lucy. Thanks, Vanessa.
You just saw you out. You wouldn't believe it, but just this morning, I work at the Y.
At the mic, please.
Sorry. I work at the Y every Tuesday morning from opening 5:45 to 10 o'clock, and then I leave there. These guys are there at 5:45 to swim, 4,000, sometimes 5,000 yards.
Wow.
So just think about that. That's...
How many laps is that?
Almost three miles.
Wow. How many laps do you ladies swim then in the morning?
72 times.
Wow.
72?
72 times three, so 4,000 yards.
I'm more of a two to seven times.
So four, four times 72, four miles.
Wow.
Pretty.
300 laps. Johnny, you want to explain what you, what you left with us?
This is our cadet manual. And it is a number of, just an overview of the program. It discusses the, the guards, but what the guards, but also what the lifeguards are expected to do in the program. It's almost like a checklist. It also provides them opportunities to, going through this, to understand how our beaches are set up and the chain of command. It goes on to giving the safety tips as they, as they continue throughout the season. We do bring them down to like homeowners' associations, like on the ocean beaches, like Beach Hampton area, where people are outside the area and educate the juniors, the cadets can go and speak to these water safety tips and hand out rip current cards to individuals that are on the beach and make sure that they are, understand the dangers of the ocean and, and how to be safe. It goes on to giving the standards for the ocean certification course and the still water certification course that we, we provide in the spring and, and in the, in late summer. It also, in the, and it goes over the Ten Commandments, Ten Commandments of a lifeguard, given to me by Smith Point Joe Dooley, God rest his soul. It, and the hand signals, lifeguards' hand signals, whistle signals, and then incident reports. When these individuals start to train and practice or train and practice rescues in the, to, in, in the cadet portion of their, their class, their course, they come in and pretend like the individual they rescued is a, is a, is a beach patron, and they take a report, which all lifeguards have to do. So they're getting, learning how to, how to write reports that can be provided for any kind of incident, whether it's a missing persons, or it's a, it's a, it's a medical EMS call, or it's a swimmer in distress rescued. And then, and there are also, we do radio communications and video communications and dealing with enforcing the rules and regulations of the beaches. So there's a lot to it. Every week that they come, we, we offer them something new. We just purchased, I will say Hampton Lifeguard Association just purchased a number of collapsible mannequins that we can bring onto the beach. You certainly want to bring the expensive ones onto the beach, but we want to bring collapsible mannequins that we can carry down there and take them out and set them up and, and teach CPR right there. So.
So we're going to be using our social media leading up to 4th of July and throughout the summer and posting about green, yellow, red flags, what that means. I think we're going to add the, the location signs, because I don't think we've ever posted about that before. We do post about the rip currents, but I think the, the ladies brought up the hand signals. We should probably do a post so that if somebody finds themselves out in the surf, that they know how to signal to the lifeguard. So that's something we'll include that you brought up today. So we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, so that we can amplify the message of beach safety, right?
That's how Ocean Rescue was started. Four, four young girls were in trouble waving to their mother on the beach, and mom would be waving back and back to the book, waving back to the book, back to the book, and they didn't realize they were in trouble. And that was the rescue that started East Hampton Voluntar Ocean Rescue in the...
And how many years ago was that?
About 2003, '02.
Thank you, Johnny, for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, next up, Tom is going to lead the discussion on the ADU Committee Code Change Recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. While Emery brings this up, I'll just give a kind of a quick background. And, you know, firstly, I want to thank everybody who's given feedback on this. You know, we've heard a lot of arguments both for and against. You know, some of the concerns we see... You know, some of the concerns we see whenever we add housing, concerns about loss of open space, impacts to wetlands, water supplies, rights, way, road traffic control, communications impacts. You know, does our power infrastructure able to manage it? Do our emergency services, are they able to cope with increased housing? What impact is this going to have on school taxes? Look, these are concerns we have with any housing project we bring in. And I think, you know, look, there are going to be some people out there who, no matter what, don't want to see more housing out here. You know, I see my role on this town board as, you know, addressing some of the key operational threats to town. And for me, housing is top of that list. ADUs, as I see it, you know, are a great mechanism to achieve that. I would like us to be more aggressive in our affordable housing. I think, you know, in the past, you know, Green at Gardner's Point is a wonderful, wonderful example of what we can do. But we could have built more units there if we'd been more aggressive. You know, additionally, there's very limited spaces where we can kind of complete those kind of projects. So in order for us to really meet the needs of the town, be it through our schools, our hospitals, our police force, town employees, we desperately need more affordable housing. ADUs themselves, you know, are considered affordable by the fact that they are rent-controlled. They're not income-controlled, but they are rent-controlled, allowing people of income restrictions to rent them as they can. You know, I also want to acknowledge, you know, the wide range of voices we've heard on this. You know, some of the public comment we get here is less supportive, but out in the public. Generally speaking, this is something I'm hearing that people really want to see for a variety of reasons. One other piece I just want to talk to with regards to ADUs and exemption. You know, there is some precedent for this. New York state law does actually allow properties to be exempt from property tax increases for adding GFAs. GFA is not counted towards property taxes. There's also exemptions in other states such as Massachusetts and California. Greenberg, New York is also looking at this as a piece. But anything we do introduce will of course be looked at by our town attorney and external attorneys as necessary. Jumping into the presentation, where we left off last time. So we brought to the board previously a range of kind of areas, some which we reached consensus on, some of which we kind of look to explore further. You know, where we can, we kind of generally all agreed was the removal requirements, that property be a property owner's primary legal residence to allow second homeowners to build ADUs. We also agreed on the fact that the tenant must be either a family member of the owner or a resident, meaning someone who lives or works in the town of East Hampton. We also agreed to change the rule that the ADUs be the tenant's legal domicile to changes to their sole legal residence to make it clear that this tenant should not have other housing. The areas that we wanted to explore further were changing the minimum lot size requirement. We'd previously looked at a 10,000 reduction from 20,000 square feet and to change the number of vehicles that were permitted on the ADU lot from four to six. And you know, as we discussed in the GFA discussion itself, to exempt ADUs from GFA calculations. One piece I want to talk to you very quickly with regards to that is to kind of note the distinction between what took place in that code amendment and what this is about. From my understanding, and my colleagues feel free to kind of jump in on this, you see fit. When we had the discussion about the GFA reduction, this wasn't about taking away affordable housing. Quite contrary to it, as we had the discussion, we said ADU should likely be exempt from this. We didn't put that into that code change, but the reduction in that was more about giant houses that were largely unoccupied rather than providing affordable housing. If we could jump onto the next slide. So a few pieces we wanted to come back and discuss were what lot sizes were current ADUs on. So if we could bring up that first graphic. Thank you. As you can see here, the vast majority of ADUs, by dint of what the code is, are in lot sizes over 20,000 square feet. We do surprisingly have some that fall into the smaller categories. You know, that is a result of things just coming through, going through the board and being allowed. So you know, I think that speaks to two things. One is that ADUs can exist on smaller lots with minimal complaint or impact because we haven't seen it. But largely that, you know, ADUs are being built where we allow them to be built. If we could go on to the next slide. So this is pending ADU applications, what we kind of have seen come in in the last few months, especially with the CD1 Plus grant. And as you can see here, again, the vast majority of applications we're seeing from a town perspective are coming in on the larger lot sizes. We do see, you know, 15% coming in in that 15,000 to 20,000 square foot area. One thing I will call out with that is when you dig into that data, those lots are typically in kind of the 19,000 to 20,000 square foot range. But no people are actually applying because of the code for the smaller lot sizes for ADU applications. The next question was, you know, discussion of ADUs on smaller lots on community character, school district, school taxes. So we could just bring up the first slide here. Okay, so this is just, you know, going through the town, town data on all residential lots in the town, just to kind of see where by hamlet lot sizes fall. You know, you can kind of see the smaller lot sizes, the sub 10,000 square feet, we've kind of taken out of this conversation. But if you begin to jump in on the next slide, please. Perfect. So here you can begin to see at specific grouping, so the 10,000 to 15,000 square feet, where do the lots lie? So on the lighter green colors, you're kind of looking at the smaller number of lots. So you know, Springs has got a relatively small number in that light green. And on the darker red colors, you're seeing kind of, you know, the higher levels of lots here. So you know, you can begin to see on this where, where our concentration of small lots are by hamlet. And then we could go to the last slide here, please. What's your last table on this slide, sorry? Okay, so then this is looking within hamlets themselves on this last slide. So if you go through this first row and we look at Amagansett example, 16.8% of Amagansett lots are between 10 and 15,000 square feet. If you go to Sag Harbor, 41,000 are in that category. You know, if you go to Montauk, you can say that 42% of Montauk lots are sub 20,000 square feet. Springs, 24%. So there is some variation by hamlet here, obviously, where the lot sizes are and where ADUs are currently being allowed to build. And that has some knock-on impacts to housing. One piece that did get raised to me on this, which I think is something worth talking to at the hamlet level as well, is, you know, impact to school taxes. You know, I appreciate that like we, you know, by adding ADUs, there is potential that you will have younger families moving in and potentially children going to the school. The piece I want to kind of really clearly make sure people understand is that we have a cap on ADUs. There are only 40 allowed per hamlet. That cap is not changing. We're not proposing to change that. So those 40 units that could be built in any hamlet are the same irrespective of the lot size. It's just a question of, are we serious about adding housing to these hamlets? In which case, do we wish to open up the pool of potential applicants who can build ADUs? Or do we wish to restrict this to kind of the wealthier homeowners with the larger lots? Next slide, please. Okay, so what I've done here is something, again, I apologize because I brought this in from the private sector, but I think it's a helpful mechanism because there's never going to be necessarily distinctive agreement on what path we should take forward with this. So it's a three, five, seven analysis where three is kind of what I'm putting out as, you know, the least aggressive scenario. And we could bring that one up first, please. Okay, so the least aggressive approach that we kind of talked about here was, I think, where we ended up largely, the kind of the board felt last time from the previous presentation was like, maybe we don't want to go to 10,000 square feet. Perhaps we should be looking more at like a 15,000 square foot lots. What does that do to our potential pool of applicants? Well, if we go to 15,000 square feet as a minimum lot size for ADUs, that would increase potential applicants in terms of lots by about 2,800 or 14% of town residential properties. Option five, which is kind of a more balanced approach. All right, so this is kind of potentially putting out there that we allow ADUs of up to 6% of total lot size on lots of 10,000 to 15,000 square feet and up to 12,000 of lots on 15,000 square feet or higher. This would increase our potential applicants by 4,911 or 25% of existing town residential lots. And lastly, seven, which is kind of what the initial proposal was last time, which is to allow ADUs of 12,000 square feet on lots of, minimum size of 10,000 square feet. Again, the number of units we would potentially, sorry, number of lots that would potentially then be eligible increases by the same amount, 4,911 or 25, sorry, 25% of residential properties. Next slide, please. Parking. So with regards to parking, I mean, just, I think the first thing to do here is to kind of call out where we are with existing parking situations. So on a homeowner's lot as it stands, there is no restriction on the number of cars that can be parked in a lot. Additionally, on short-term rentals, there is no restriction on the number of cars can be parked in a lot. However, on ADU properties, there is a restriction that only four cars can be parked on a lot. Logistically speaking, you know, if you are talking of a four or five-family house and they're looking to add on an ADU that a couple both working move into, you would require two more cars potentially on that lot. The question then becomes, where do you put those cars? Do you say to the existing family, hey, we know you have two kids who drive and, you know, both parents drive in your situation, you can't have any more cars? Or do we look to find a way to make this work? You know, the initial proposal we'd come back from the committee here was to allow six cars on ADU properties. We still think this is the best approach to parking here. However, you know, you know, I think irrespective, there's a need to add some parking should we allow ADUs. So a compromise here of five cars, you know, to limit impacts to neighborhood characters, something that the committee is open, you know, to presenting here as well. Next slide, please. And lastly, GFA exclusion. The current code does not exempt the GFA of an attached ADU from the GFA calculation for the primary residence. You know, ADUs are required to meet all setback requirements of the principal structure, but the GFA as it currently stands would be counted. We did discuss, as I mentioned earlier during the GFA discussion, the concept of, you know, excluding ADUs from that GFA calculation. I think, you know, when you look at what that code is and what else is exempt in terms that you could exempt a 600-square-foot garage, but you couldn't exempt a 600-square-foot ADU, you know, there's a balance there to say, is that an environmental discussion? What's the kind of right path forward on this one? So the recommendation from the committee here is to continue to exclude ADUs from the GFA calculation as per the law allowing it. I would use that state law 421P regarding ADUs being exempt from property tax increases as a starting point and we could work that from there as the law permits. And you know, next steps, obviously, I haven't put a timeline on it this time. You know, it is something that I do, would like to move forward with as time permits. You know, so I would like to be aggressive on this because I really would like to get more housing out there. I think it's our pressing need. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Well, let's move to discussion.
Yeah.
David, do you want to start us off?
Sure. I think one of my first, one of my first legislative, I'll call it a victory here, was when we did decrease the lot area size from 40,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet for detached ADUs. We're pretty much only talking about attached ADUs here, correct?
Correct.
That unfortunately, in my eyes, didn't really release the valve that we wanted for more ADUs. But I think now that we have the community housing funding to be able to do so, we might be able to see a greater mechanism financially also. I think we have to be very delicate with decreasing lot size here as we go because once you start getting into the UROs or our locations in which developments happened 50, 60 years ago, on where developers are trying to put the maximum amount of properties into an area without open space parameters, other easements on there then too, it could change the character of that specific community, hence neighborhood. And it's very similar to my discussion points when we were on GFA discussion. As we said and noted here, even Dish Plains is different than Beach Hampton is different than Mytiffany Estates and it might be different than further in other areas then too. So we have to be cognizant on that also. As far as going back to the topics where consensus, I'm still in those topics of consensus on there and I would like to see that moved upon also. I think if we're going to decrease it, I think as far as the square footage, I think releasing the valve slower is better than larger on this. And I would be comfortable with going to 15,000 square feet to see what that would do to other ADUs. If you're getting to the maximum number of vehicles on there then too, smaller lots, I mean, if a parking spot, just a parking spot in general, without any curbing or anything, it's 180 square feet. If you're allowing five parking spots, it'd be 900 square feet then too. To me, on a 10,000-square-foot lot, this, you know, 9% would be 10% of your lot area. I could see that being appropriate, five cars. I'm in a family where I have five cars. And I got five, I got five insurance payments.
Okay, okay.
You know, so, but like if you have a family and then you want to have an ADU that might have two cars also, a husband and wife or whatever the situation might be then too, I think that is, that is something that we would have to adjust fairly. And I think that's a fair, fair recommendation. Yeah, man, there's no economy of scale on insurance a little bit, but still. Under GFA exclusion here, it wasn't my intention to remove ADUs from GFA. I have a very difficult issue to find out what the clawback mechanism would be if that ADU that would be internally, would be expired on there. How are we going to remove that? Do you turn it to storage? Do you decrease the collar ties on there? I guess I'm more of a cynicism on that also. My belief in ADU, decreasing GFA was to be careful about massing. Restore, let's go, excuse me, maintain the character of these neighborhoods by trying to decrease that massing that we were seeing that to me, myself personally, my opinion was offensive where we've been heading to in the last 10 years. So I wouldn't be up for removing the GFA for ADUs. I think there's a way that we, we can do it appropriately within the formulas that we currently have. But I'm open for discussion more. And thank you for bringing back the data that was requested and also Tom.
Okay. Yes, I'll go. So Tom, I do think that incentivizing the type of belt that we need in the town, which is obviously affordable, is one of the top needs in the town, is something that we should be doing. So just in the beginning of your presentation, when you spoke and you spoke of the town attorneys reviewing any changes, would the planning department please be included in that list?
Yep, they are, yep.
Okay. And you also mentioned that, you know, the zoning code amendments and the reduction in GFA is, what we're dealing with is not just giant houses unoccupied, but what also spurred the changes besides what David mentioned and of course sustainability issues across the board was the use of, the proliferation of short-term rental in our town and the now investment companies that are coming into town to telling people how to maximize their ADU, I'm sorry, not ADU, their short-term rental profits. So those, that, those were the reasons why we really want to look at that. And I think I've mentioned before in my liaison report, I'm going to bring back a presentation in the near future on short-term rentals and the impacts to our community and addressing some of them. I am good with all the consensus things. I, you know, I like a slower approach on the property size, but I'm open. What, and even GFA, incentivizing GFA exclusion for ADUs, the, what I need is to feel like we're setting up some, within the code, some kind of guardrails, which is what we usually do to protect from the abuse of what's in, and to make sure the right people are building because it is quite expensive to add an ADU either detached or attached with today's cost of building. And it seems to be only going up. So I, my concern overall is to, how do we do it to make sure that it's going to the right people? It's enforceable and there is a removal clause if people remove it. I was, I'll just throw out some stuff. The, I think the issue with the 600-square-foot garage is a good example because suppose now I have a 600-square-foot garage, which I'm entitled to, that doesn't count towards my GFA and I want to make that 600-square-foot garage an ADU. So why would we now count it? We're not incentivizing if we now count that space in GFA, but maybe there's an equitable number that doesn't have as large impact. Or, the impact is an interesting word, but for me is not, cannot, we make sure that it's going to the people we want it to go to and the use is intended for the use that and the use is intended for the use that we want it to happen on. Those are the two key points and from my experience, you know, being on the zoning board and, and, and looking at this. It's not to say that people try to get around the zoning, but you do have people that will look to how they can maximize their profit potential by using something in a way that it's not intended for, and now we're losing out on even more affordability. So that's, that's my concern on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm generally supportive of this, Tom. I appreciate your work. I wholeheartedly agree that this is one of the biggest issues we face and we need to be creative and look for all, all types of solutions. The consensus topics, I, I agree with all of those. I think we all are on board. For the minimum lot area requirement, I think there's a lot of properties that are just under 20,000 square feet and it seems to be a strange line to draw and we're excluding a lot of people. I would probably favor a slower approach of 1,500 square feet, or 15,000 rather. But I'm, I'm open-minded about that and I guess I'll just jump right to the last, which is the GFA. I, I'm skeptical of not counting ADUs towards GFA because as Dave points out, what would happen if the ADUs ceases? I think it creates problems and I think that we'd have to find some way to allow people to keep that space of storage or whatever, but then it's sort of fighting against the principles that led us to, you know, as a board to reduce GFA generally. And I think that, but if, so I, I say a couple of those two things together because if we didn't exempt things from GFA, then I'd be more open to, to go in as low as 10,000 square feet to have an ADU because the livable space would be the same whether it was a single family or two. I think the wise approach here would be 15,000 square feet. And the other thing I want to say is we haven't had as much buy-in to ADUs as I would like. But as you point out, there's a cap in each hamlet. And so I do think if we were to choose whether ADUs are generally on larger properties or smaller, we would want them to be on larger. And so perhaps going to 15,000 opens the valve and we then cap out. And, you know, in that case, I don't think we would need to go lower than that. That said, I'm, I'm very open-minded about this and I think that if we don't have the influx of, you know, applications, that we should look at, you know, more incentives. I think that is the right approach incentivizes people to do what is needed, which is affordable housing. Number of vehicles, I really don't have a problem with it. And I think actually, if you read the way that this is written, it could be argued that we would be encouraging off-site parking if we limited the number of vehicles. Because I think that it's not hard to imagine a, a single-family home along with an ADU having more than four cars. All this says, I believe, is that they can't be on that lot. Well, I'm not sure we want it to be someplace that's not on that lot. And, and I understand that there's a quality of life and a visual impact to somebody's car, but, you know, I think that in the interest of balance and encouraging affordable housing, that's an, an exception I would make. You know, Kate, I think brought up a very good point about short-term rentals and the concern about people, you know, monetizing these, and we certainly don't want that. But I, Tom, I guess correct me if I'm wrong, is there, you can't rent the main house and an ADU, right?
Correct, you can only.
As long as that's ironclad, then, you know, the, the, I, I'm not as worried about it. I agree with Kate generally though, that that's something we have to look at really, really carefully across the board and especially when it comes to ADUs. If you have an ADU, I think that, you know, needs to be affordable or lived in by the owner. Just, you know, ironclad. And then I also, I think the garage exemption, my understanding is that we did include for, you know, detached ADUs, that they wouldn't be included in GFA because they're already limited. I think that the reason they were limited to 600 square feet detached and 1,200 square feet as part of the house is because it wouldn't create that conflict. You automatically, if you, you know, cease the ADUs, you're grandfathered in to have it as a garage and so there's.
You're not grandfathered. You could, you could turn it into an accessory.
That's what I mean, yes.
Structure.
Not grandfathered, it's code compliant in either case. You're, you're right, Dave.
Yeah, I was referring to the attached garages when we exempted the first 600 square foot. And then I'm thinking, you know, realistically in terms of someone's ability to construct in that space. So if it's 600 square foot, if it's an ADU and it's a garage that you have or, you know, that, that's the issue too with what's existing and what can be added, right? So if you're already at max GFA with your house, I'm not sure I'm okay with adding more, more attached space outside of the existing structure. So there's some nuances, but my, my thought was if you were going to now make that an ADU, that's to take away your garage, make it an ADU. Maybe you don't have enough room on your property for you to feel comfortable with the 600 square foot attached structure. Then I think we, if we had a mechanism to be able to keep that 600 square foot for, only in the instance of an ADU.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the clarification. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I was thinking detached. As, as you know, I, I sort of advocated for that space to be flexible to begin with and, and certainly if we allow it for a garage, we should allow it for an ADU, I think, up to 600 square feet. So yeah, you're absolutely right. I, I wholeheartedly agree.
I think it's probably the most affordable way to, to convert space rather than either that or in the basement.
And you know, as, as Kathy says, you know, our, our budget and what we do shows our values. And if we're really trying to encourage affordable housing, I think we should say, well, storage space for your family is important and so is affordable housing. And so it's a, I think it, it's a very good balance. Thank you for clarifying and correcting me.
So I, I agree with the topics of consensus from our last meeting. As far as changing the minimum lot area requirement, I'm, I agree with my colleagues. I think 15,000 square feet makes more sense, you know. As far as the minimum, the maximum number of vehicles on a property. Jake, I had asked, I was by understanding that on rental properties, you couldn't, you couldn't have more than four unrelated people and I thought that there was a, you couldn't have more than four cars. Is that?
I'm trying to figure that out, right?
Is it in the rental registry code? Is it in the rental registry code? Because I remember working on it.
Yeah, I believe it's in the rental registry code.
Let's see if they're exclusive.
Okay, so we need to find where that is because if it, because it may, you know, in the, one of the points in the presentation that there was no limit on short-term rental, but there may be, you know, it may be the same whether you rent year-round or, or short-term, that you're only allowed four cars. But it's, I, I think there should be a sliding scale. I think we talked about that last time. The smaller lots, maybe you don't go to six at 15,000 square feet because that's, as David did the math, it's a lot of square footage for, for driveway. I do have concerns about exempting from GFA zoning. I remember a few years back when code enforcement had to inspect every artist's studio every year to make sure artist studios weren't converted to apartments. And so there's concern there. So I, you know, I, I, I think instead of moving forward with that exemption, I know that we had been talking about and we had hired Whitman, Osterman and Hannah to get a ruling from the IRS regarding our community housing fund. We talked about doing a loan program for ADU construction. I think it was up to $100,000 the last time we discussed it to help offset construction costs. And it was a three to two vote that we hold off until we get the IRS's ruling. From Jake checked it out for me. The, the letter went to the IRS last week. We're going to be getting acknowledgement in the next 30 days and then it's going to take them six to nine months to come back with a ruling. You know, I guess the attorney probably knows more than I do, but given the state of our federal government, I wouldn't want to hang my hat on that we're going to get a ruling in six to nine months. So I am willing to revisit and if the town attorney's office can draft a document that needs to be notarized by the homeowner and acknowledging that this ruling hasn't come forth and that, you know, because we don't, we knew when we did the water quality, when we grants that it, it came, the Suffolk County Controller changed the rule, the law and it became, it counted as income. I would hate to see our homeowners, you know, have $100,000 construction loan count as income, but if they go in eyes wide open and notarize the document, that maybe there are, you know, cases in town where people would be comfortable taking that loan. I'm willing to revisit that and I would like that to be the way to increase the ability to build more affordable housing. This, the CDLI program is income restricted, our program is not. So I think it would be a way to encourage ADU construction and development. So that's kind of where I stand.
Good, thank you, everyone. Yeah, I've just, just one point to revisit and just kind of, I, I didn't mention the committee's position on this. But, you know, with regards to enforcement, it, it is a challenging one. And even with our existing ADUs, you know, people can build one on a 30,000 square foot lot and how do we ensure that two, three years from now, it's still being used as an ADU? I mean, so the enforcement issue is going to be there irrespective. The committee's position on this is, is very straightforward and I, I agree with it. Look, if you build something and it's not required as an ADU, you, you have to take it down. These are about providing housing and that, that's really what this is. So, you know, committee's strong on that and I, I, I back them on this. It's like, look, the whole purpose of this is to deliver affordable housing and people who look to build these to kind of do something else, no, I, I think the town should pursue that irrespective of what are the changes we make of the ADUs out there currently that are being misused, then we need to address that through code enforcement.
Or, or the Office of Housing or even the Building Inspector, yeah, because that's been discussed. And I, and I completely agree with you on that.
Yeah.
You know, and I just got the one last comment, but what Ian said is, there is a backstop, as you mentioned.
Yes.
You know, and which was extended and enforcement, it was discussed in that years ago. I was on the board then. I think it's a good discussion. We, we, if, if we get to, to a point where that backstop of the number of the maximum amount of ADUs in a hamlet is met and we have to discuss, do we extend it at that point? That's a good discussion. It shows that the board is moving things in the right way. And honestly, I would look forward to having that discussion if we can ever even get there.
Yeah, and just to give you guys and the public some clarification where we're at with that. You know, in Springs, where we could have 40, we currently have 14. East Hampton, we have 20 of the 40. Amagansett, we have two of the 40. Montork, we have seven of the 40 and Wayne Scott, we have zero. So it just emphasizes that, you know, there's a few factors at play. You tie that back to some of the earlier tables where you're looking at lot size in, in, you know, Montork and Springs. You know, small lot sizes mean that ADUs have been restrictive there. You know, East Hampton, where you see larger lots, typically seeing more ADUs as well. In terms of the applications we've had, you know, primary interest has been in the Springs and East Hampton areas. I would say there's account for about 70% of what we've seen in CD plus one applications that came in. And then the majority, sorry, the minority being then after that, Amagansett, Montork and minimal in Wayne Scott and Sag Harbor. But I would also say that of the applications we saw, 40% of the applications we saw were under 20,000 square feet. So it's, it's definitely, there's a demand there from homeowners to do this. And then the last point on that as well, I'd say that, look, ADUs have two benefits. One is the provision of affordable housing. The other is for people to stay in place and create a second source of income. And so for our smaller lots where the median household income is typically lower, this is allowing those families to stay in our community, you know, and I'm a common volunteer that we need like lifeguards to, to make the town work. So that's just my two cents on that.
Yeah, I just want to throw out another idea, Tom, just as, you know, off the top of my head is to look at the percent, you know, of those 40, how many could be at 10,000? How many could be at 15 as a way to?
We, we have that, yep. Yeah, that's on, sorry, I can show you that, okay.
So next steps, draft code, draft, and then Greg, you can review it, send it to for comments as he's on your timetables?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Planning board comments. Well, first I think it comes, it comes to us drafted as code.
Correct.
For our work session.
Yeah.
Jake, you did, you looked into the code and what did you find?
The way I read the code is at any point, a homeowner is not occupying the residence, no more than four cars are allowed.
Right, that's what I thought. What, and what section of the code is that in?
255-11-62G.
Wow, good. Say that again, David?
64-11-65G.
55-11-64G. And the use is prohibited in single-family residence.
Yeah.
And it's qualified by 255-11-62D, which says when the homeowner is not at the house.
Right. So David has got six drivers, he can have six cars. But if he rents his house out for the month of July, he can only have four cars parked there.
I still, I still drive my 1998 Mazda. I mean, come on.
Still going, okay.
Still going.
All right, Tom, you just let me know when you think that attorney's office will have that drafted. And, and also, I, I didn't have the latest version of the PowerPoint. If you could send the one that Emily had.
Yes, sir, I sent two through. One was a handout and one was a presentation. You guys had a printout of the presentation instead of the handout, but I will send it through you as well.
Beautiful, thank you. And maybe we should print that, post that as well.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Okay, so now special event, late fees discussion. Yesterday I sent around a memo, you know, I, you know, we realized that on average, I'm actually, last year we issued over 500 permits and, you know, at many times these permit applications come in past the deadline. So if they can't be brought to a meeting, it just brings on a whole rash of other kind of issues, particularly during the summer when you're trying to track down the chief of police, the chief fire marshal, you know, if marine patrols involved, it's just town board members. So we changed the fee structure. It's spelled out on the, on the memo. But we've had it, now that we, we've done that, we've had some folks, some reaction. Like we had the Clearwater Beach Property Owners Association submitted an application on June 2nd for a July 12th event and it's an annual event. So we've reviewed this before, all the parking is self-contained. And yet, according to our schedule, we were to fine them $2,000 for a late fee. And, you know, that just seemed unreasonable and I know that they wrote back and said, you know, we can appreciate it. We'll pay $500 towards the late fee, but, you know, $2,000 is a tremendous amount of money. And then we had another resident that had put in an application for, you know, 100 people, only 60 people turned up. But residential, it would have been a free permit, but with the late fee, because she submitted it the week of because she was traveling and couldn't get it notarized. And then because it was in with such a short period of time, her party for 60 people, her permit cost her $450. So I'm, I'm hoping that we can find, you know, maybe the, the 2024 schedule may have been too generous and, but I think the new one is just a bit onerous and needs to be rethought a little bit. We did look up what Southampton does. They charge, they have a formula by how far out you or how close in to the event you submit your application. But, you know, I can't imagine with the volume of applications, particularly in the summer, asking town staff to do that, I think would be too much. But I, there's got to be a reasonable medium here. I don't know. You've heard other things, other anecdotal stories from folks.
Those are the only two I've heard. I did ask the special events team to kind of pull together what we had, we've had this year in terms of late applications versus the total for last year. So I just wanted to break those out by category. So for residential this year, we've had 10 late applications year-to-date. Total last year was 47 late applications. That's in, in fees generated, that's been 2,400 this year versus the total for last year of 9,350. For public applications, we've had one late application this year, which generated $200 versus four late applications last year that generated $910. Commercial is where this is most interesting and this is the one perhaps where I would, if anyone's going to push back and say we don't change, it's commercial. So commercial year-to-date, we've had 35 late applications generating 19,000 in late fees. This is compared to last year, we had 42 late applications, total year generating $13,600. For catered events, we've had one late application this year. It's generated $200 versus 12 total last year that generated $1,300. Seasonal, we had one last year, it was $100. We've had zero this year and elsewhere, zero. So we haven't had a huge number of late applications. So I think in that sense, the changes have been effective. People are like, well, I want to get this in. But I, obviously there's been one or two cases, the Clearwater one, I think being the most concerning, which is like, look, that's something that's a repeat application, perhaps if it's kind of that straightforward, I think. But yes, I think there's, there's definitely kind of scope in some of those. It's just the commercial ones, I think like, look, you guys are operating this as a business. You, you need to be professional about it and get it on time, just like we do. I, I think the other piece to call back about this is, you know, when we kind of went through the use of our legislative secretary's time in, in processing these, I think it was 27 and a half of their 34 hours a week are on special events. And so, you know, part of the scope of this is that, you know, if we're to, you know, free up our legislative secretaries, free up our legislative secretaries, we want to have, you know, an income that kind of meets the needs of what that department generates. And, and, you know, moving towards this structure is something I hope would be there for that. But yeah, I, I agree, there's, listen, it's, it was a change. If we need to massage a little bit for certain things, I'm totally up for that.
Because I think also, and, you know, in the newsletter, we did do a mention about residential permits. I think some folks don't even realize that the code requires that they're having a graduation party for more than fifty people, that they have to get a special event permit. And sometimes when they do finally realize that, it's a week or so before the party. So if, this is something that you want to take back.
Yeah.
To the committee and, and address and come back with a recommendation. And, you know, if you want to carve out commercial and, and have different late fees for different types of applications, that makes a lot of sense to.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do think they need to be, it needs to be tweaked. I think that, I agree with the commercial, remaining what it is. We are only on July first, so we don't have a full picture of, of what we are at compared to last numbers. Last year's numbers, we have quite a long ways to go, but I think for the residential, which is the, the, there's an application, everything's free on the residential permit, it's onerous to hit them with a late charge because they're not, they're homeowners, they're not professionals.
Yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate this problem and it does seem like two thousand for Clearwater is excessive. What about if we just, I mean, the point here is we want people to submit on time so that we can process the work organized and not burden ourselves, but we don't want to be onerous in terms of the fines. What if we just, on a case by case basis, and one that really didn't cause any problems, what was technically late, we could waive by resolution so that we, because if we just take away the teeth of this, like, I mean, you're right, I don't want to, you know, charge homeowners a ton, but if people feel like they can always submit it late and there's no consequences or it's very easy to do that, are we going to correct the problem? And that's a tricky balance to strike. So I'm one who.
I'm not for removing it, but I think the amount is too, is excessive.
Yeah.
But the fee has to be commensurate with.
The trouble it causes.
Right, right. So it's, it's, it's a matter of somebody hands something in on a Thursday for a Saturday night clambake, the committee's already met and now you're trying to track down, like I said, the chief of police, the fire marshal, the.
And if they have comments on the parking plan, then it even makes it longer. Now everybody's rushing to.
You're not looking at it once, you're looking at it two or three times.
And I think with the Clearwater one, the reason it hit that category is it was a very large size event. It's two hundred and fifty people and with that, we have to get everybody's eyes on it because the public safety issue is, is really there and that's time and money, unfortunately. So, you know, I would, to Ian's point, yeah, I'm, I would lean ideally more towards if we think it's egregious, we have a right as a board to adjust it, but keep the teeth.
But then we have to collect it and refund it, so we're actually causing people more, we're spending more staff time on doing things.
Yeah, I think as a balance, we can come back.
Yeah, I also just might as well take this opportunity, since we're talking about the special events team, to talk about the insane amount of work that our legislative secretaries and part-time help Miriam put into answering questions, whether it's late or not. The phone never stops ringing, the emails never stop coming in, and I just want to thank them for being able to handle all this stuff to begin with.
Yes.
But there's also, you know, folks that do need to fill out a special event permit. It's pretty well spelled out on the website. If you go to how do I, as one of the main tabs, and you click, go down to special events, we basically spelled it all out there. So it should be, you know, if folks took the time to take a look at the website and it explains what type of application you need to use, what needs to be included, it's very straightforward.
I would, I would say the one I have on my liaison report, but I'll mention now because it's to the point, but like, the one we continue to see issues with is parking. And just some kind of general guidance on that is, you know, there is online example of what we'd like to see in terms of a parking plan. But, you know, beyond that, just kind of one good rule is you can only park the cars on one side of the road and even then, we have to get sign off from PD. So as you're submitting your parking plan, please ensure it's only on one side of the road, because if it's not, it's immediately going to come back to you.
And it's clear, it's mapped out clearly, or else, again, that, that, that delays you getting your permit.
Right.
That, because we meet weekly, but we do a tremendous amount of work in between in emails as well, but we have to see a proper plan.
But I just have a final comment. So I want to be very careful of the subjectiveness of, of, of not doing it through a resolution to what Ian was mentioning there, then too. It should be straight across the board. So bring that back to the special events committee, knowing that we are at a.
Just saying, if we accepted the five hundred dollars for Clearwater Beach and it should have been two thousand, that needs a resolution Thursday night.
And then, and then there's a PO involved as well.
Yeah, sorry.
It's all right. It's, it's July first.
Yeah.
July fourth weekend. I know your special events has a meeting tomorrow. I wouldn't mind even, if you, if, if special events committee got to our, our offices, we are, where you look at the recommendation, I wouldn't mind trying to do something either for Thursday or for next Tuesday. I think that's the timing we're at in the season right now to get it packed and in the discussion. And I appreciate the supervisor bringing it back because part about what we do here is, is that relief valve, what we're doing. We saw this touched a little bit in the wrong way and we're trying to, trying to fix it on the fly, but the flying has to go fast, so that's all. Thank you.
All right. So if there's no other comments, we are done with our topics for today and we're up to liaison reports, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Madam Supervisor. Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee, we're minded, the meeting is July fourteenth, Assembly Member Tommy Don Shavoni will be there. Also, we, today, we have the resolution on the lighting bond I will be introducing. You know, residents did reach out to me, just raising concerns that I've also raised in public safety regarding kind of the Friday, Saturday night crowds and, you know, ride share vehicles on Main Street during the evenings. It's kind of, it's impacting quality of life there. IT, this week, we've been reviewing the, I've been reviewing with the head of IT, the budget for twenty twenty-six. You know, some of the key pieces that I'm going to be setting up to my colleagues to review are some of the investments in software programs, security programs and people that we're looking to kind of, I put forward for twenty twenty-six. Human services, Emery, if we could pull this one up. So I'm pleased to announce that we have completed the painting of the, and repair of the exterior of the senior center on Springs Fire Place Road. I wanted to give huge thanks to the Buildings and Maintenance Department. We go to the next slide as well. The Buildings and Maintenance Department did a huge amount of woodwork and helped get supplies as well. But something I'm going to be looking to do for a few of my different departments over the course of the year is to do a kind of a profile, just so you get to know who's working for your town, who's doing the work. And Isaac Lopez is a wonderful person who works in our human service department. He painted the entire exterior of this building. Isaac's been with the town for numerous years. He's also a volunteer ambulance member, a volunteer firefighter, and fortunate for some, unfortunate others, a Yankees fan. But he, he did a great job. I'm just going to go through some of the photos if we can, if we can move on to the next slide. Just kind of showing the work he did. So you can see, you know, the, the lightwood is where we replaced the old siding. And we've painted this gray color, it's come up beautifully there. This is the back of the building. Scroll down again if we could. Again, just different view of the back. I mean, there was, for those of you who visited the site previously, it was in pretty poor repair, so this is a huge improvement. Keep going, Emery, if we would. And then the other thing he was able to do is, you know, we put in some new ADA parking spaces there just to ensure adequate access, and those are done by Isaac as well. So just wanted to thank him for that incredible work.
Yes.
And to the Buildings and Maintenance Team. And then lastly, just so I didn't get to it, because it was on a Wednesday after our last meeting, our senior center managed to do a great tour to the Amagansett Life Saving Station. It's such a beautiful facility, I encourage everyone to get down there and I thank my colleague David for all the hard work and he and his team have done in getting that to where it is. So that's everything for senior center. Fire marshal. I've been working with the Fire Marshal's Office and IT to develop some new inputs for commercial operators to update the list of hazardous materials they're keeping on site, safety sheets and other equipment. I will follow up with that with my colleagues in a further meeting, but it's something we have them on, working on based on feedback we've received from you as well. Trustees, we did just want to call out, we received a public note supporting the town purchase of Cove Hollow from the town trustees, so just wanted to mention that. Sanitation, next presentation if we could. So sanitation, as with IT, we've been reviewing the budget for twenty twenty-six. I'm also happy to announce that after twenty odd years, we have replaced the artwork at the Montauk Recycling Center, second, third grade kids, all the way through to seventh grade kids as well. There's ten new panels up there representing what they see kind of as the heart of Montauk. Right there, they're standing next to the Montauk School, where they know that one well. But there's some lovely, lovely artwork up there by them, so just wanted to thank Mr. Odom, Mr. Salzman and Ms. Newbury for all the hard work they put in getting that done. So thank you to them. It, it is a treat when you go in there and see. It's lovely. It's really, really, it makes it, it's just that kind of Montauk vibe, it's, it's great. Fort Hill Cemetery, we have a meeting next week to discuss twenty twenty-six budget. East End Fire Commissioners, the next meeting is now scheduled for September thirtieth, that will be in Bridgehampton. Public Safety, we have a meeting on Wednesday. I was on scene for that recent incident that took place in Montauk over the weekend with the arts fair. I, I just want to say to everybody with what we've seen this summer, please don't get into a car if you're under the influence, it's, only has bad outcomes. Don't get in as a passenger, don't get in as a driver, it, it's, it's not worth it. It's simply not worth it for anybody. Then lastly, on Wildlife Management Committee, we had a walkthrough of the Grassy Hollow Preserve by Andy Gates. It was very interesting to see there. So for those of you who don't know, that preserve was created to kind of examine what the impact of deer is on undergrowth within the town's forest. It's about a ten thousand square foot preserve. It, it's amazing to see the species that are able to grow there without that impact on them, sassafras, winter greens, numerous other pieces. You know, it, it's something that we kind of will look to take on board as a wildlife committee as we kind of look, you know, what are next steps for us to increase the biodiversity of our woodlands? And then, sorry, one last thing, we did meet last week with the Emergency Preparedness Committee. We are moving forward with doing a tabletop exercise, which will be examining what the impact of a category one hurricane would be were to hit on the Suffolk-Nassau County border. We're going to be doing that in conjunction with Suffolk County Fire and Rescue Emergency Services. Anyone who wishes to learn more about that, feel free to reach out to my office and I will walk you through it as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Well, I, yes, thank you, Madam Supervisor. And I just got text photos.
I have everything ready.
Yes, I got one more. Let me get this one first because it literally just came to my, my thing.
All right.
Update on the multi-user field at the Fred Thiel Recreational Facility, they're, they're just completing the paving just right now and that's my smile. You know, so that facility is going to be ready for the public very, very shortly. So I thank everyone that's working on that. Next, I, of course, this is the town, town board, these are just some locations. This is a, a program that the town board did two years ago and it actually mimics something that, that Chief McGuire did in the, in the village. The town of East Hampton reminds drivers of the New York State's move over law. As the summer season begins, heavier traffic to East Hampton, town officials are reminding drivers to follow the New York State's move over law to help protect the people who keep our roads and communities safe. Temporary roadside signs will be placed throughout the town to remind motorists of this important safety law, which requires drivers to slow down and safely move, safely move over for law enforcement, emergency responders, tow operators, highway crews and utility workers stopped along roadways. When approaching any stopped emergency or hazard vehicle displaying red, blue, green lights, drivers must reduce speed and proceed with caution. On multi-lane roads, drivers must move out of the lane next to the stopped vehicle if safe to do so. This includes yielding to volunteers using blue or green courtesy lights when responding to an emergency. Red and blue lights indicate law enforcement and official emergency vehicles. Blue lights are used for volunteer firefighters. Green lights are used for, used by volunteer ambulance and East Hampton Town Volunteer Ocean Rescue Members. These courtesy lights request the right of way so volunteers can reach emergencies quickly and safely. Drivers should stay alert, check mirrors often and yield when they see flashing red, blue or green lights. When you see these lights, move over and move right. The town thanks everyone for driving responsibly and keeping, uh, keeping, helping keep our roads safe for first responders and all those who save our community, serve our community. We did this about two years ago, we're going to put up signs both in English and Spanish as you see on the screen on there also. I do, I have been discussing with town PD also about Uber lights and Lyft lights, which are, are steady lights in front windshields. We're, we're trying to find out how that works into VTL, a lot of the confusion, but solely pretty much if you see a red, if you see a flashing light, move over, there are individuals that are trying to get to a, a scene of an emergency then too.
Just going to come very quick. Just one thing, it's very few EMS have green lights, pretty much everyone in the town now operates on blue light system.
Got it. So thank you very much, exactly. We'll put those out for a, a, a short period of time at some of our locations that the board supports. Next on here, and did I lose it? I did lose it. Okay, thank you. I want to thank the Director of Marine Resources from the DEC, Martin Gary, him and his staff came out as a part of a three portion meeting for the MREC, which is the Marine Resources Advisory Committee. They had a meeting in Montauk last Thursday evening, it was well attended, and this is discussion about the striped bass allocation tag program on there and potential changes that they had to, that's a long time coming in my humble opinion. But I want to thank Director Gary for his responsiveness, two questions of that community on that. Once it goes back to MREC for final discussions, there will be a public portion, sorry, public comment portion, I'll let everyone know. But again, what this is talking about is, is how to legally transfer striped bass tags within the, the state's allotment and quota of striped, striped bass tags that we get every year then too. There's questions, there's skepticism, of course, but again, there was direction and movement on it. So I thank them. And any more information, you can please contact the director, sorry, the Marine Resources Director, Martin Gary, or his staff members at MREC. Last week, I participated in a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, along with the state and county officials and other officials from Long Island to talk about the project partnership agreement, also known as the PPA for the, the projects on Long Island. We'll have more information on that upcoming, also then too, but that is about how the, the PPA is manifested over the next thirty years for the municipalities that are involved, which includes the town of East Hampton and specifically the downtown Montauk work project that we had. At the Playhouse, we instituted a, a pilot program and the pilot program was in consideration for pickleball, in which we went to a weekend, residents only play on weekends through the month of June. The town board has decided to move forward on that for also extended that pilot program into the month of July to see how that affects the users and play out there then too. So please be aware that pickleball on the weekends for the month of July will be for only residents onlys. Tom, you brought up rideshare. So as you know, I've got commercial property in Amagansett and on Friday evening, I'm not a stranger to Amagansett, Friday evening, I actually was in there and, actually was not this past Friday, it was the Friday before, which was the holiday weekend, it's almost the same as here and it was, it was busy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I walked around with Officer Bori that day and we just looked at rideshares dropping people off everywhere in a place of least resistance. When you try to tell them to go into the parking lot, yeah, right, they just go everywhere. I then ended up having another follow-up meeting with Lieutenant Alver, I talked to the chief and Lieutenant Alversa that evening and I met with him in, in, about rideshare options we might have for temporary drop off locations or zones on there. I've gotten some information to them, so I'm actively also working on that, maybe we could discuss that a little, a little bit more. So that is something that, very cognizant in that hamlet specifically, but I also know it affects Montauk specifically around Surf Lodge and others then too.
One thing that I've kind of examined on my side with that is there is the ability in some municipalities to geofence areas that would actually stop dubeys from being able to pick up people in certain areas. And that's something that we potentially have the ability to do, but we can explore.
Correct. That might be for twenty twenty-six, but can we do maybe in twenty-five as a pilot to see what works also? Yes. Want to let everyone know also that the Montauk Chamber Commerce fireworks are this, this Friday, July fourth, and also Devon Yacht Club is actually for July fifth, which is Saturday then too. actually for, uh, July 5th, which is Saturday then too. In downtown Montauk, we're going to be bringing out some of our light stanchions also, which will be new this year to place at some of the crosswalks, uh, in coordination with PD also. I want to let the town board and also know that we were, uh, recently awarded, uh, a, a grant of a plaque from the Pomeroy Foundation for a National Historically Historical Register plaque that we applied for, thank you to the town board, for the Montauk Tennis Auditorium, also known as the Montauk Playhouse. But in 1988, the application went as the Montauk Tennis Auditorium. Uh, so I want to thank the Pomeroy Foundation for that and we'll install that inside, uh, inside the, uh, the location then, uh, at the Playhouse or the Auditorium. That also leads me up that the tennis, uh, the Playhouse is steadily moving forward on the completion of that project then too. Next, I want to, uh, uh, alert the town and the many that I was, I went to the U.S. Coast Guard Change of Command last week or the week before. Uh, this was, uh, Captain Alyssa Gary was the commander of the U.S. Coast Guard Sector Long Island Sound was there presiding. Uh, it's been nice to get to know Captain guarantee. She's been to multiple, uh, change commands for Coast Guard Station Montauk. Specifically, I want to thank Master Chief Nathaniel Kyle O'Connell, U.S. Coast Guard. He was relieved and he was relieved by Senior Chief Colin Snowbell, uh, U.S. Coast Guard Command. Uh, I want to thank Kyle for all that he, he's done in the, in a couple of years that he was here. Him and his family acclimated to East Hampton really well. He coached softball to a championship team actually with his, his daughter. Uh, and then I want to thank, uh, thank him and his wife. They also put on, um, fundraising events in which they did, uh, at the, the, the cruise quarters in Montauk, uh, Halloween, all the Halloween shows. It was, it was great. Uh, he's been great. Uh, I met Colin and, uh, Senior Chief Snowbell also. Uh, he's a man of a, a great ability and we should all be so blessed to have leadership like this and not just that, but also the U.S. Coast Guard or Coast Guard Station Montauk. So I want to let the board know about that. Um, I want to also let everyone know that, uh, on, uh, we're doing a dedication ceremony. Do you have that?
No, no.
Okay. We have a, uh, the town of East Hampton is to dedicate, uh, the, the Anthony Drexel Duke Memorial Multi-User Path, Tony Duke, uh, at the Boys and Girls Harbor Park. This dedication ceremony ribbon cutting will be for the Tony Duke Memorial Multi-User Path. It'll be Monday, July 7th, 2025 at 1:00 PM. Uh, there will be members of the Duke family, the town board members and others there. The town of East Hampton in coordination with the Duke family will be holding a dedication ceremony to celebrate the opening of the Anthony Drexel Duke Memorial Multi-User Path at Boys and Girls Harbor. This project honors the legacy of Anthony Tony Duke Senior, a World War II Navy veteran and founder of Boys Harbor, uh, who devoted his life, uh, to providing educational and recreational opportunities for generations of young people, including myself. Tony Duke established Boys Harbor in 1937 with a vision of giving children from New York City safe spaces to learn and grow. His leadership and, uh, full, uh, full, uh, philanthropy, excuse me, that came out great, have impacted tens of thousands of lives and the new path will ensure that his spirit of community and access to nature continues for years to come. The ceremony will include brie- brief remarks by others in a ribbon cutting ceremony then too, will take place rain or shine with the covered pavilion available if needed. Uh, I remember going to, uh, to not camp there, but they would take us from, uh, um, the middle school where we do trust falls and stuff. Uh, and I think it's a wonderful dedication, uh, of the path to his legacy in our community. I know he still has a lot of people that he touches in the community. So I hope that gets out there to all. I want to thank the town board for this dedication. I think it's extremely, uh, appropriate. Um, lastly, um, two things about Little League. I believe there are games at 6:00 PM on Thursday. Unfortunately, we have a town board meeting for the U-10 baseball, uh, All-Star teams that were playing. Uh, I went there last week with my daughter who asked to go, uh, where they had, I think it was U-12, Boys and Girls Softball and Baseball going on there too. And it was great and wonderful to see. Now, what I do have to say is that there's a lot of excitement. It's not hard to believe. I'm an excitable guy and I'm an excitable dad and I like going to my kids' games and I cheer, but I cheer well and I cheer positively. That doesn't happen all the time. As you'll see the signs there, there are no scholarships being given out. Uh, there was one family member that got a little over excited this past week and it really touched off, uh, one of the umpires to a point where he was, the family member is asked to be removed. And unfortunately, what happens is that the children get to see this. And also what happens is that the umpire gets upset. I do have to say, and I'm going to call him out by name, Brian Stuckert, who is the umpire, has been umpiring there for years, is a wonderful man of precision to the craft of umpiring. Uh, he works really hard at it and too, he takes it very seriously and straight across the board. There is no need to act up at a kid's game. Brian shows kids how to act by being a steward of the game then too. And I think as parents and visitors and everyone that's there, we owe Brian, uh, an apology for what happened, but also we owe him a salute for how he produces a great fair and balanced game then too. And I hope he understands this. I know I sent him a message how I feel then too, but I want to make sure that the general public knows what he does for East Hampton Little League over the years is something I hope he continues to do. So Brian, that one's for you.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Kate?
Yes, and, um, David, I think the, the children owed an apology as well, uh, for having to witness that behavior. Um, I just also want to go back to your liaison report announcing the fireworks in Montauk. We did pass a new code about walking on the dunes.
Yes.
Just wanted to emphasize that, uh, folks are not permitted to walk on the dunes except for in the designated pathways. Uh, and this is to preserve our beach grass from being trampled. Once it's trampled, it's over. And also our very important dune. So I just wanted to
Thank you.
to acknowledge that. Um, the New York State Grant, uh, Resiliency and Sustainability, uh, meeting for Montauk was held at the Montauk Library yesterday. In attendance were Lilio Daunt, Andy Harris, Jen Iacona, and congratulations to Jen, as I understand, she is the new president of the Montauk Playhouse Association, Allison Bronco from the Nature Conservancy. East Hampton Town staff included Sam Klein, Jean Carosa and Tina Lagaren and myself. We reviewed and, uh, they reviewed. I, I don't score as a town board member. Uh, they reviewed and gave scores to the consultant groups that replied. It was a long meeting, but quite productive. This is a great group of people and I look forward to getting this, uh, uh, study of resiliency post FIP, post disaster on how we can get our businesses and homes up and running. Once the area is stabilized, we have to think of how do we rebuild? And this is what this grant is for. Um, it's $600,000 and we've got really interesting proposals. Uh, the Pecanic Estuary Local Government Management Committee, which I sit on, um, uh, gave, met and we had an update on all things, uh, Pecanic Estuary. Um, a partnership, you know, and there, there also is, uh, the, um, negative impacts of federal funding going away, uh, for all groups, including groups like this that do, um, actionable items. They don't just, you know, they, they do studies, but they also, uh, uh, give, give, uh, money for actionable items to all of the communities in the Pecanic Estuary area and, uh, groups like this are vital and funding them is vital as well. The Little Litter Action Committee met and discussed East Hampton's Cleanup Day in coordination with the National Cleanup Day, which will happen on the third Saturday in September and what that's going to look like in East Hampton. More to come on that. We are also working on several action items for the near future as follow-ups from the presentation to the town board. That continues. The Sustainability Committee met, was an abbreviated meeting due to other commitments, uh, from, by folks. Um, we are working and moving forward on the recommendation to the board for tree protections, bamboo, um, legislation, uh, and, and codes. I'm coordinating with Len Green, a member of the group, and also Rewild LI, um, or, or East End, I think it is. Um, and to co-host a meeting with the community groups that are helping to educate homeowners to join the sustainable landscaping movement. It's, it's growing. We, um, have the two, two examples on town campus that happened through Change Hampton and other groups. That's the Pollinator Garden. And with that, I met with student interns. We had gone to Kathy and I and Ian had attended their, um, their onboarding, um, meeting, um, at Long Lane. And I met the same interns, uh, led by Len to, who volunteered and worked on the budding, uh, native meadows that are the most recent additions to Town Hall Campus. And like I said, to the young ladies who are lifeguards, uh, and, and spreading the word on water safety, it's really wonderful to see high school students become so familiar with how to do the work of gardening and how to make it sustainable and how to increase sustainability across the town, a message they can spread to their peer groups. So I'm just going to thank them again. I'm probably going to thank them all the time. Um, Jason, I had
So they were here yesterday.
They were out there.
Yeah. So I went out there and introduced, some of them hadn't been on the onboarding. So I introduced myself again. And of course, the mother and me, I'm making sure they're hydrated and they've got sunscreen on and, and they're going to be out here, um, every two weeks.
Yeah, working on the meadow.
Oh, it's gorgeous out there right now.
Yeah.
It really is.
Great. And it's all sustainable and native. Um, so anybody could do it on their property. Um, just, just come out and check out the signs that have the QR codes. Uh, and there's a lot of information there. Uh, part of the, um, part of the, uh, goal of the meeting with the community groups that are helping to educate homeowners is to develop, uh, a more robust webpage for the town on sustainable landscaping, native plants that exist and how to and go-tos. Um, so that's one of the things that we'll be doing. And just as an aside, uh, going to a lot of the events that are happening across town, uh, in the summer to, in support of the, uh, non-government groups, the, the charitable organizations, the nonprofit organizations that work so diligently across our community, uh, from childcare, uh, to, uh, sustainability, to groups like Pride, um, and, uh, I Try, um, that really do a lot of work for the people in our community, um, and their volunteers and they do such good work. I just want to also again, give a shout out to them. Um, Jason, I, I have a, a photo that I sent you earlier because we have, uh, compost bins are happening. Uh, I don't know if you can pull it up? If not, I'll just read it. I sent it to your email address this morning.
One moment, please. I'll look for the, the new photo.
Yeah, and I'll, uh, just talk about it. Uh, so, uh, it's, uh, we're welcoming folks to the Summer 2025 East Hampton Compost Bin and Rain Barrel Sale. Um, this is where we can have healthier gardens, cleaner water and safe environments. Uh, the town, uh, is able with partnering with the vendor, uh, on already existing contracts to be able to offer discounts on compost bins for your backyard and also rain barrels. So, uh, the town is East Hampton is making it easier in, in coordination with these groups to recycle food scraps and save water. So how do you get started? Check out the compost bins and rain barrels for sale at easthamptoncompost.com. Uh, I'm sorry, easthamptoncompost.org. And we'll get a social media post, uh, out on that. Uh, this was, uh, looking very small, so no one can read it.
Here, I'll, I'll zoom in.
Thanks. So, uh, there's, uh, significant discounts on backyard composting and all of the information on how to get started. Uh, you'll purchase the bins online and then there are pickup dates here, uh, at Town Hall. Um, the, uh, deadline to order is Thursday, July 24th, uh, 2025. And the pickups will be on, uh, Saturday, July 26th between, um, two and, and five. But if you need to make other arrangements here at Town Hall, you can just reach out to the group after you purchased your bin. Uh, one bin or two, one is super, but with two, you can start adding scraps to the second bin while first ones finish, uh, composting. And I know we have composters, uh, on the town board sitting here who can, uh, attest to how great it is to get your food scraps out of the waste stream. Helps all of us, but also what beautiful, uh, composting product, uh, comes out of that and that helps your plants grow.
Yeah. I mean, I, I personally do this at home and I've been doing it for about four, five years now. I, I would say probably half the waste I produce is food scraps, vegetables. And it's amazing how much you can reduce what goes into landfill. Um, it's, it's a very easy thing to do at home. Barrels work, but you don't have to have a barrel. You can do a home thing. You can set up with pallets. I mean, there's different ways to do it. It's really just about keeping those nutrients on your side and working them through. I, I recommend it to everybody.
And, uh, I just want to also, uh, finish with the ditch dune construction progress, the comment period, uh, for the, uh, this, it's a standard comment period. It, it, uh, is alerted by a legal notice, uh, in the paper of record, which, uh, happened here and, uh, that comment period closed. And that's another step forward to getting the DEC permit. And that's what I got.
Beautiful. Thank you, Kate. Ian?
Uh, the Property Management Committee met last month and I, I think I mentioned this in a previous liaison report. We are looking for, uh, the path forward with the Dodge property. We adopted a management plan that I think they did a great job on. And the consensus there was that they want to move forward on a, a number of fronts. And I just wanted to let the board know and see if anybody has any objections or thoughts or, or different opinions. Um, we'd like to go with the house to get to, uh, there's been a structural analysis completed. We'd like to do engineering on that to actually, you know, do the next step, which is renovation. I know I'd expressed the balance between wanting to, to do that, but also identify, um, a licensee so that we know that the, whatever work is done is appropriate. The consensus was that the first floor should be ADA accessible and have an ADA bathroom, um, regardless of the user. And so I think that, that I would recommend moving forward on the house itself. Um, the other two structures, the barn and the, the small house, um, are a little bit, little bit trickier because those are going to very much depend on who the ultimate licensee is. In terms of the little house, there, in the, um, report from Bob Hefner, it was mentioned that this could have been, uh, Henry Mitchell House and it wasn't totally clear. And so actually what came up in this meeting was perhaps we should just, it, the, the report said if more is found, this should be noted or something like that. Well, I think as a board, we might want to consider consulting an archaeologist to, with care, remove some of the, the interior that's, that's covered probably some history there. I don't think it'd be incredibly expensive. I would have to talk to planning to figure out how to, to do that. But rather than wait until somebody starts to renovate and see what we find, maybe we intentionally look to investigate because that's, that's got the, the potential to be a very important house. And I think what ultimately happens with it would be, be dependent on what else we find there. Um, if there's general support, I would get more details on that in terms of cost and, and procedure. Um, while we're redoing, if, if, you know, there's support to go and, and start to, to engineer the, the renovations of the house, simultaneously, I think we could work on an RFP that would just say that the town, and part of the thought there was that, that the Property Management Committee felt there would be, it would show good faith in the town's behalf to say that we care about these properties. We're putting in the work, which would encourage more people to, um, you know, apply, to submit a, submit a proposal. And I, I think that that's a, a good approach. Again, because I think regardless of who the user is, it's appropriate to have the first floor at least be ADA and the rest, um, restored sort of in, in kind. Um, lastly, there was large support for a multi-purpose trail there. Um, yeah. Um, you know, this one I was personally a little bit, well, because that would involve parking. Uh, but you know, this is a very unique property that however it's used, um, you know, it's historic. I know we, it's agriculture. There's a lot of different things going on there, but it may make sense to do a multi-purpose trail now in a way that would, would not be in conflict with the future user because that would be towards the back of the woods. And if we decide that that's the appropriate thing there, there was some talk on the committee level of, you know, bringing it back into agriculture, but it's, it's wooded now. So that was a major, that'd be a major endeavor. And I think if we like these multi-purpose trails, this would be a good opportunity to sort of again, move forward, um, but responsibly and make sure that it's consistent with the future use. So, uh, Dodge property, I'm full steam ahead on all those things. If there's support, you don't have to answer. I mean, now you can give any comments or just let me know after.
So I think having an ADA bathroom in the ramp, it's, it's appropriate there for the engineering. The house is in pretty good shape. I would probably say if you're going to go with engineering, it'd be nice to see if they could also just put in a phase in there for upgrading of the electricity if we needed to move to heat pumps on there. Uh, so that might be a good part of the engineering that you don't have to do it. There could be a construction for the bathroom and the ramp, but also a second phase if it was ever needed to, if, if it failed, we would have that in one engineering package.
Yeah, I know. I would be in favor of, of sort of figuring it out all of it together. So the details there, I know Dave, you've done a lot of this type of stuff and, and Scott and others have opinions, but yeah, I would, I would want to include that for sure. Um, we also talked about the Osborne House. I think there's support in the board to, um, we, we continue to work forward with the Osborne Farm Management Plan, uh, still a work in progress. But again, in the meantime, we're going to do, um, I want to look at repairing that house just to keep it, um, keep its integrity before, you know, so it doesn't deteriorate, uh, in a way that we're consistent with any future user there. Uh, Spring CAC met last, uh, the last Tuesday of, um, for the third Tuesday, right after our third meeting in June. The large talking point there was about a, the parking problems. Uh, and Tom, you mentioned this with special events. I think we see during the farmer's market and other events in the Heart of Springs, there's parking issues. I brought this up in a previous liaison report too. Um, I've started to talking to an engineer about what kind of parking might fit behind the library. Um, I have a very, very rough plan, uh, that now I would like to circulate to, circulating to planning, natural resources. What I really want to do is flag any potential issues. Um, you know, things are going to pop up, but sort of see what we can responsibly fit and then scale back from there. But it turns out there's quite a bit of space back there. Um, obviously we want to be as low impact as possible. I see this as kind of a three-season lot that could be permeable because, which I think will help us environmentally. I don't think there needs to be snow plowing, for example, which I know sort of leads towards asphalt because asphalt, because the time where there are the big events are sort of usually the summer, maybe the spring and the fall. And there was a lot of excitement in the Spring CAC. I'm also voicing that here again, because inevitably, there's probably going to be other opinions too, and I welcome any sort of, you know, concerns.
No, there's no other. Yeah, I just, one thing to think on that is what restrictions in terms of timing are you thinking of for it? Is it going to have any long term or is it?
You mean, and I don't think I would have official restrictions necessarily. It's just, I think that we could have a permeable surface if we just acknowledge we're not going to plow it, for example. Because Parsons Place, I think, has plenty of parking in the wintertime for people who use the area. It's in the summertime. I mean, you know, we've done a lot of work down there. We have Parsons now, the Blacksmith Shop has been renovated, Pussy's Pond Restoration. The Heart of Springs had an event last year, which was just beautiful. I think they're doing, you know, it's the 50th anniversary for the library this year. There's a really popular mahjong game that goes on there. And I think that there's a safety issue. And so I don't want to discourage people from using the beautiful place, but I want to do it safely. And so the idea is to provide with as low impact as possible a place to park. And I just think a permeable surface is more palatable aesthetically and also would serve the needs. So I don't think I would limit necessarily when people could use it if it was, if it's just practice.
Would you say, for example, restrict overnight parking? That would be something?
Yes, for sure.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
We've done that in most of our parks, because that's Pussy's Pond, I believe, is a nature, might be a nature preserve even. So, but I would say go back to the old historical pictures, it was wide open at some point.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's the other analysis that has been done, and that the quality of, I mean, look, there's some vegetation there, but the quality, it's not particularly high. It's not native. I would still like to respect the aesthetics and have good screening, so tuck it back within that area. But there's sort of a natural clearing and I don't think it would be environmentally super problematic. We have to make sure that we're far enough away from Pussy's Pond and I want to stay out of, you know, natural resources, special permit areas and stuff like that. So it's, it's early in the stages, but because I think I had your support to start, you know, we've taken one more step forward and I, I know that the people in Springs who utilize that area, everyone I've spoken to are very eager for this to go. As I pointed out, it's not a solution for this year, but I would like to, you know, keep it moving, get it done as soon as possible if it proves to be feasible. The, I just want to mention, this is a little bit random, but the First Time Home Buyer Program is active, and I just want people to know that there are $30,000 loans available for anybody who's a first time home buyer, and this includes not only new houses, but also land and modular homes. So we've had a few applications this year, but not quite as many as last year. I'd like to work with the Public Information Officer to maybe get this out there. I know we've done a post before, but look, I think that's a great program. I think that we've had some great success cases of people who need it. I think it represents what we all talk about and have struggling with enough of, which is keeping, you know, the core people of our community here and being part of the community. Lastly, we had a meeting, Tom Flight and myself with, at the Montauk Firehouse. I thank them for making that available to us about the Camp Hero Sewer System. They have an old septic, shared septic system there. It's been talked about for a long time to replace that with low nitrogen. Kim Shaw has said that there are natural, there's water quality funding available to replace that, and I think it's the right move and the residents actually were supportive of that. So this is a big project that's going to take more planning. Tom and I have been speaking with that community for the last year or so, wanted to make sure that they were on board and aware of what we were talking about. And this meeting, I think, tied it together. I want to also thank Tom Lembo from Nelson &amp; Pope, who gave a great presentation and I think demonstrated the reasons why this is good for the environment, good for, for that community and a worthwhile project. So again, more to come, but I'm, I'm moving that forward as of now with the help of Natural Resources and others. And since somebody else thanked Building and Grounds, I think Steve O'Brien's come up here a couple of times, I'll just give my thank you to him. I emailed, somebody emailed me from the public about a sign that was positioned in a poor place, and I emailed him that day, and I think by the next day, it was done. And I appreciate, I appreciate his work. There's a lot of different things going on, but Steve seems to do a very good job of sort of, if he's in the area, taking care of multiple things at once. And he made me look good on that one, so I appreciate it, even though I did very little. That's all I have.
So this time of year, I give the East Hampton Town Police Department Weekend Activity Updates. So last weekend was very busy as we build up to 4th of July. There were 228 calls for service. There were seven DWIs, eight arrests, and seven of those were DWIs. There were 16 residential noise complaints, four commercial noise complaints, and one commercial establishment received a summons. There were 94 traffic summonses, nine accidents, 14 medical aided cases, eight town ordinance tickets were issued for open alcohol, public urination, and noise. The East Hampton Town Police Department Friday and Saturday supplemental shift activity, wrote 25 traffic citations, 22 of them were for primarily Ubers and taxis stopped in the roadway in Amagansett in Montauk Main Street. As Tom mentioned earlier, you know, as a community, we are deeply relieved there were no serious injuries in the terrible incident that took place on the Montauk Green last weekend. Our hearts go out to the artists whose livelihoods were damaged by this individual. We thank our first responders and law enforcement for stepping up so quickly, and we will continue to assess how to keep our residents safe. As I said, we're gearing up for 4th of July. Multiple town departments have coordinated efforts to ensure public safety, smooth traffic flow, and a positive holiday experience for all, you know, all of our enforcement agencies will be fully staffed. There will be foot patrols in the business districts of Montauk and Amagansett focused on quality of life violations and traffic safety. Stop DWI overtime shifts have been assigned to ensure further road safety. You mentioned we've got fireworks, Montauk Chamber on Friday night, Devon on Saturday night, and Sag Harbor also has their fireworks on Saturday night. Traffic congestion is expected, you know, especially during the firework events, but just generally, we just ask folks, as David pointed out, if you see emergency lights, please pull over and just, you know, be patient, you'll get there. Your kindness goes a long way. Marine Patrol is going to have patrol vessels underway for the fireworks, and they'll also be assisting Sag Harbor on July 5th. Ordnance Enforcement, fully staffed. And then we got a great presentation by Lucy and Vanessa today on beach safety. We hope folks follow that. And if you have non-emergency issues, please don't call 911. Call the Police Department at 631-537-7575. Just want to remind folks, the recycling center will be open on July 4th. This Thursday, we have a board meeting, there are nine public hearings. I will have one resolution on that I wanted to point out. It's a bond for $1.5 million for the renovation and expansion of our current dispatch facilities at police headquarters. As board members know, in 2025 capital plan, we funded the engineering portion, and now we're moving towards construction. The facility improvements include HVAC, electric and plumbing upgrades, transaction window replacement, installation of ballistic walls, flooring replacement, and a new facility layout. The equipment is going to be upgraded as we need new consoles. The new monitors will support new technology that we will need as we expand our dispatch services. Like I said, this project's been in the works since last year, and some of these needs were identified during the recent discussions as we're going to be moving to providing additional dispatching services in 2026. I also want to make my colleagues aware that I'm not going to be in attendance at next Tuesday's work session. I've been asked to interview potential developers for the new Route 114 Affordable Housing Project with the East Hampton Housing Authority Commissioners. So Kate will be running the meeting in Montauk. We talked a little bit about, Kate mentioned, some of the folks that are doing, the not-for-profits out here, doing the good work. There were a couple of events this weekend. One was for the Eleanor Whitmore Early Childcare Center. The other was for Springs Food Pantry. And I'm going to be asking some of our grant recipients to make presentations this summer. We do provide grants for these organizations, and I think it would be great for us to get an update on, on the work, the good work that they're doing. And lastly, I know you were excited about what's going on at the multipurpose path, a multipurpose field. I'm all excited because the newsletter is being dropped at the post office today. So hopefully, the post office is going to turn that around quickly and it'll be in the mailboxes this weekend.
I have one last thing I just wanted to mention. I was talking to some of the teachers at the high school about our graduates from high school for this year, and I want to say a remarkable number of students, I think it's nine or 10, are joining our armed services. And I just want to thank them for their commitment to our country and our safety. So thank you all very much.
Awesome. Love to hear that. Okay, so that, that's everyone's liaison report for today, so now we can move on to resolutions.
It's my pleasure to offer Resolution 2025-919. This is a point seasonal employee in the Recreation Department, Augusta Swain.
Sorry, Aggie.
Hourly rate is $17.85, effective July 2nd, 2025.
Second, all in favor.
920 is a point seasonal lifeguards in the Recreation Department for May and June 2025. Names, positions, pay scales, and effective dates listed below.
Second, all in favor.
921 is a point seasonal employee in the Recreation Department, Melanie Viscayano. She is a wonderful girl. At $17.85, effective July 2nd, 2025.
Second, all in favor.
922 is a point maintenance mechanic, one of the Buildings and Grounds Department, Lucas Yeney, and hourly salary $62,316.80, retroactive to June 9th, 2025.
Second, all in favor.
923 is a terminate seasonal lifeguard in the Recreation Department, retroactive to June 14th, 2025. Names, positions listed below.
Second, all in favor.
924 is a terminate full-time employee in the Highway Department.
Second, all in favor.
925 is a sept donation from the Montauk Playhouse Community Center Foundation in the amount of $36,000 to the town of East Hampton.
Second, all in favor.
926 is approved change order number four in the Montauk Playhouse Community Foundation, Community Center, Boiler Matic Welding Industries Incorporated, bid EH23-036. This is an amount, change order number four, an amount of $21,045 for control valves, pool heater exchanges, temper, temperature sensors, integration, remote monitoring.
Second, all in favor.
927 is approved change order number 12 from the Montauk Playhouse Community Centers for Crossroads Corporation, bid EH23-036, in the amount of $16,415.29, and increased the original contract for a booster pump and higher class railings and guards.
Second, all in favor.
I have Resolution 928, which is a budget modification for Natural Resources. This is moving $400 from subcontractor costs to motor vehicle repair, same amount.
Second.
All in favor.
Resolution 929 is to release security, and this is releasing security for approved roadwork in urban renewal areas. The applicant is Nine Front LLC. That's Elizabeth Gleason, 636 Hans Creek Road, East Hampton. The parcel is located at Two Hawthorne Avenue in Springs, and the amount is $18,000.
Second.
All in favor. Those are the resolutions we have for today. Do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, potential litigation, litigation, contracts, CPF, real estate, and advice of counsel.
Second.
All in favor. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today, and thank you, Jason at LTVA.